Like to obtain a copy, please contact a member of the school committee or the administration. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes as everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Do I have a motion? Motion from Joe, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
One abstention.
One abstention. Oh, and one abstention. Okay. So, six in favor and one abstention. Our next order of business is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do I have any announcements? Scott?
Mr. Chairman, just want to congratulate and recognize our National Honor Society inductees that's going on as we speak. Always a very proud moment. I love seeing all the Facebook posts when the gowns are coming out and you can start to see the weather starting to get a little nice and it's getting into that time of year again. So, it's great to see the accomplishments and certainly congratulations to all the students as well as to the parents as well of all of our newest National Honor Society inductees. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Kevin?
Yeah, I have two things, Mr. Chairman. First, as the committee knows, Carrie Bonnack, the Milford High School principal, has accepted a position with the Framingham Public Schools. And I want to formally wish Carrie the best of luck in her new endeavor and thank her for her service to the Milford Public Schools. I also want to briefly outline the process for the search for the next Milford High School principal. The search process and timeline will be discussed in detail at the Milford School Committee meeting on May 4th, but I do want to throw the timeline out because we're trying to be very aggressive. The position was posted and advertised on April 25th. We're having a meeting with the high school faculty to discuss the process on May 2nd. The application posting will close on May 9th. And we have a screening committee which will identify semifinalists on May 10th. And then we'll have semifinalist interviews on May 15th and 16th. Through that process, we'll identify ideally two to three finalists. And we'll have a public forum where we'll have anybody from the community is welcome to attend as well as an MHS site visit on May 23rd. And we hope to bring the recommended candidate to the Milford School Committee on June 8th. The goal is to have a very inclusive process with teachers, students, administration, school committee members, all involved in the process as well as community members at different stages. And I'll outline that in more detail at the next meeting next week. Also, for elementary classroom placements, I just want to remind the public that this year, families of students entering grades one through five will be notified of their class assignment the week of August 15th. Historically, we have provided classroom assignments on the last day of school. We are shifting the dates due to fluctuating enrollments over the course of the summer, shifts in teaching or grade level assignments of our faculty, and providing our school administration and faculty teams more time to ensure that we are making the best possible placement for all the children in Milford. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements of correspondence? I just had a couple of things. As many of you probably know, the Citizens from Milford are sponsoring the Milford Beautification Day on Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. So, I'd certainly encourage members of the community, our staff, our students to participate if you'd like to participate. They're going to be at the parking lot across the street from Sacred Heart handing out trash bags and gloves that morning. If you have an hour or two, that'd be great. The Stacy Middle School PTO, I see Nancy here, the Stacy Middle School PTO will be hosting their first annual Casino Night fundraiser at the Crystal Room on May 5th. And then Memorial School is also hosting a 5K on May 13th. All ages are welcome to run or walk and the proceeds will go towards the new playground behind Memorial. All right. Our next agenda item is the invitation to speak. Do we have members of the junior class here? Or sophomore class? Sorry. How you doing, guys?
How are you?
Just introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about the auction.
Well, I'm Ryan Hazard. I'm the president of the Class 2019.
I'm Josh Segur. I'm the vice president of the Class 2019.
Well, we really just wanted to come here to invite you to our silent and live auction that we have on May 6th, which is next Saturday. It will take place at the Hoboken Club and it begins at 7:00. So, we have many great items for the auction, including vacation rentals, Red Sox tickets, prom baskets, restaurant gift cards, theater tickets, family and senior portrait sessions, mother and father day baskets, and even a canoe.
Fifteen feet.
Yeah. Fifteen whole feet, yeah. Our fundraising efforts will help the Class 2019 host events through their junior and senior years, including junior prom, senior formal, senior prom, and senior field day. And the proceeds raised will allow us to donate to Milford After Prom, which provides a safe, alcohol-free environment to continue their celebration immediately after prom. Also, our efforts, we are able to provide students who are financially unable to participate in senior events, the opportunity to join in with their classmates by raising this money. Last year, the MHS Class 2018 held a similar auction and was able to raise over $15,000. So, this is our largest fundraiser that we do at Milford and your participation would really help to make it a success. And any community members wishing to attend can purchase tickets at the door, $10 per person. And we thank you and hope we see you all there, so.
Yeah, this will be a really great night out. You know, there's a cash bar, so come hang out with us. Like you said, there's a lot of fun.
Just to be clear, the high school students aren't going to be doing a drinking event.
No, actually, well, it's a...
So does only.
It's a...
It came out, it's a cash bar.
It's an 18-over event. We're the only underage kids allowed. The kids on the school, on our student council are the only people allowed out, so it's 18-over. So, it should be a fun night, so.
I'll hand you your tickets.
Good, yeah, it'd be great.
Does your dad know your auction office canoe? What am I going to do with that?
Does anyone have any questions for them about the auction?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and giving us an update. Good luck to you guys. I'm sure hopefully you'll set your, you get your sights set to outpace the class in front of you.
Of course, yeah. And Jim?
Yeah, just, so, I've been helping out as well and I just wanted to say that the response from the community has been fantastic. WMRC has been very gracious to them, allowing them to come on and promote the event. They've got some great response from businesses, local businesses around town, and then also the municipalities have been very gracious to give back. Chief Olafland has given back. Chief Tui from the fire department have put together some great gift packages. Chief for the day, getting to ride in the fire truck for the Santa Parade, stuff like that. So, it really has been great and the community's support around the class has been impressive, so we just want to say thank you.
Good, thank you. Sounds like a great night and I'm sure we're all looking forward to it, so good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Got it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Hi, John.
All right. Brianna, would you like to come up as well? Give us a little update on what's happening at MHS?
So, hello, my name's Brianna Brazza. I'm a junior at Milford High School and I'm a class representative for the class of 2018. And I'm here on behalf of the high school just to let you guys know what's happening. So, the Milford High School students recently participated in a job fair for juniors and seniors sponsored by Blackstone Valley Education Foundation. Participation employers included Dell Technologies, Unibank, Solomon Health and Retirement, AGS, the Southwick Zoo, Galliford's Restaurant Interstate Specialty Products and Manpower. Each company comes to the high school and is seeking to hire a full-time entry-level workers within the next few months. And workforce central Milford conducted a job readiness session for all students upon their arrival. Limpton Court provided an interactive soft skills activity for students focusing on greeting employers during interviews and the importance of eye contact. On March 4th, the percussion ensemble traveled to the University of Rhode Island to compete in the annual percussion festival. The students performed a song called "Escaping a Nightmare." Three of the percussionists also played a trio called "The Three Buccaneers." Both groups received a score of superior, which is the highest score you can receive, earning 31 out of 32 points. The Milford High School Fourth Annual Best Buddies Sweetheart Pageant was held on April 7th. Students showcased their formal wear sponsored by Jackie's Boutique and performed acts in singing, dancing, and in athletics. Students in the class of 2017 and 18 who were interested in taking early college school Framingham State University summer session should sign up in Ms. Bonnack's office by May 3rd. There is no cost for the college course and the course will run from June 22nd to, oh, sorry, from May 22nd to June 26th. Registration information was emailed to all parents. All students in the class of 2019 were invited to attend an MCAS Math March Madness on early release day on March 31st from 10:35 to 1:00. Our dedicated math teachers planned this special mathematic event that mirrored the competition in the NCAA March Madness for college basketball. Homerooms competed against each other and competed to be the homeroom champions, earning a title, trophy, and even breakfast in homeroom the next Friday. On April 7th, 2017, Milford High School was represented at the annual Student Government Day proceedings by senior Christopher Watson and junior Aliyah Copeland, who were accompanied by our advanced placement government teacher, Mr. Bontempo. When they arrived, they were greeted at the Senate House by Representative Brian Murray. Student Government Day provides educators and students from Massachusetts public and private high schools with many opportunities to learn firsthand about the state government. This year, participating students debated in the merits of two bills. The House Bill 253, an act relative to student data privacy, and Senate Bill 1908, an act of relative to hands-free cellphone devices.
Wow. It's a lot going on. You can tell we're getting towards the end of the year with all the activity that's happening up there. Nice job, Brianna.
Thank you for having me.
Nice job.
Nice job.
Actually, before you leave, that's okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Just, so Brianna, just thank you for coming and giving us the update and we know it's not easy coming in front of, coming in front of the board here, so just want to say thank you and you did a very nice job.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Bye. All right. So, the next agenda item is the recognition of Milford High School cheerleaders.
It's too many of them.
Yeah.
Why do you think? The captain's up front.
I know, it's fantastic.
We're going to get her a nameplate.
That's a good-sized group. How you doing?
Good.
Good. Is your coach here somewhere, too?
She is. She's hiding behind the pole.
I'm hiding. It's all fucked up.
Heather, we were just saying, we're going to have to get you a nameplate. You're spending so much time at these meetings.
Oh, please do. I won't take a seat anymore.
All right.
I always forget to take pictures, so I'm getting a Twitter pic now.
Nice job. And do you want to, do you want to kick it off, Peter, or is Heather?
I'll let Heather talk. One thing we were chatting about, though, from my perspective is, you know, she probably gets tired of it, but I send a daily email out and it always, to the coaches, and it always says intent and intensity at every practice. And I think from my three years here, this program, just the sustainability of excellence just is incredible, you know? And she probably, like I said, gets tired of the emails, but, you know, every time I drop into a practice, I hear, "Do it again. Do it again," because she wants perfection and the gals, you know, they rise to that level, so I'll turn it over to her, but I would love for her to get a nameplate and be able to hang out with the guys all the time.
Who can sit next to you?
This is great. We love you. So, rock on.
Well, thank you for having us. As always, I truly appreciate it. You know, I have lots of friends in the cheerleading world and many of them are jealous of the fact that you guys are so overwhelmingly appreciative of the team. You guys foster a great positive attitude with the team and that is hugely important for me as well as the kids. So, I can tell you, my friends are jealous of you, so I appreciate that you have us here. My team works incredibly hard. It's all about them. If they didn't step up to the plate, I wouldn't be able to do the job that I'm doing. So, you know, I do this for them. I love it. I've been doing it and cheering since I was 11 in some way or shape or form, coaching since I was 16. So, I love what I do. I love the kids and it really is all about them and I just push them to be the best people, athletes that they can be on an everyday level, so it's kind of where we are.
Great. Can you tell us a little bit about the season?
Sure. So, we haven't competed the last couple of winter seasons because we didn't have the numbers. And going into this winter season, I was like, you know what? We can do this because we've been co-ed the last couple of falls. And our boy couldn't compete in the winter. He does, like, all-star cheerleading, so he can't commit. So, I was like, you know what? We have plenty of talent. So, we decided to compete 15 all-girl, whereas in the fall, we competed 20 co-ed, which is vastly different than cheerleading. We won the Hockamuck League Championship, which is our first winter Hockamuck League Championship since we joined the league in 2012, so that's super exciting. We placed fifth at the state level. We didn't have our best state day. We had a few falls and, you know, unlike all the other sports, we get one chance. There's no fourth quarter like the Patriots got to come back. So, we have one opportunity. It didn't go quite the way that we wanted it to. However, they still received a bid to Nationals, which is a huge deal because that goes on scale and score. And so, they should all be proud of themselves. I was super proud of them. At the moment, everyone's frustrated, you know? We wish we could have done more. Everybody's like that, but at the end of the day, I couldn't be more proud of their accolades this entire year. Has been a phenomenal year from winning states in the fall to regionals in the fall as well and leagues in the winter. They hit every title that they could hit this school year, so they should be super proud of themselves as well as I am.
Great.
Yeah.
Would any of you girls like to say anything? Or is it a shy group?
Well, we have, half of our team is currently at induction, so we are missing several girls for that and then some for other things, but we, I know that we have somebody that would like to talk. Kristen?
Okay. The other thing about specifically this winter team that I saw and the difference in the team was that we all really supported each other and that really goes a long way when you're trying to, you know, do something as a team. And just the love, like, these girls are my family and I'm really going to miss them next year. And it was just really incredible to see specifically in the winter season. We just got really, really, really close.
Can I add one more thing? I think it's important to note the barometer, to not have a great day, to maybe have just an average day and get fifth. Some teams would love to crack the top 10 or the top 12 or the top 15, so to have a subpar day and get fifth, there's a lot of teams that would love to be, but because of the excellence that this program has and these gals and this coach have, that becomes a subpar day for them. And I think that's just important to note because, you know, there's a lot of teams that would love to be fifth. I understand we don't accept that. That's great. First place is always, but I think it's, I think we need to, you know, just breathe that in a little bit.
Well, yeah, and you know, the funny thing is, is I talked to the coach that came in 12th. So, we had talked and they had a perfect day. They hit their entire routine and everything and we had talked and he goes, it's just, there's no comparison because the talent level and the difficulty level that these guys have and are hitting consistently is just huge. So, for a team to hit perfectly and come in 12th to a team that didn't and come in fifth, it's a lot to be said for their talent level and their dedication, so.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just congratulations. I mean, it's outstanding that you're here at every other school committee meeting. You're bringing talent here. It's impressive then what these girls do.
Heather Johnson, H-E-A-T-T-R. I'll put it anywhere.
Just congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, just to build on that, so I had an opportunity to actually watch you guys and I've watched you guys obviously for the last several years. It really is, even as somebody who knows absolutely nothing about cheerleading, other than as a pure spectator, and I've had the opportunity to come back and talk about this in meetings as well, it really is a huge difference to watch you ladies step on the mats, do your presentation, do your, do your whole competition, do your entire routine, walking off. And I've said, boy, if you haven't seen one of these meets, first off, they're, I've never seen such spectacular athletes as all of you are. It's amazing to watch, number one. Number two, it is such a huge difference in your professionalism and the way that you guys compete and the way that you do support each other. It's awesome to watch, just not only as a parent, but just as a pure spectator. And there's some great teams out there, but, you know, to Coach Peter's conversation earlier, to have a sort of an off day for you and you still qualify for Nationals, still a pretty good day. So, congratulations to you ladies.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations. Well, you know, obviously, as Heather, you mentioned earlier, we're all very proud of you and the success that you're having, not just this year, but in previous years as well. You're the model of consistency. I feel like every year, Joey's point, you're coming in and as a result of some championship, right? So, I think you're a model, not only for other cheerleading squads, but other teams within this school as well, in the work that you've done with the youth league and developing the talent. You know, it clearly has results, right? So, congratulations.
Yeah, that is true. No, I'm sorry. The only thing I would just say is, you know, I think you guys qualify for Nationals in the fall. You guys qualify for Nationals. I think the only thing I would say is, as a committee, if there's anything we can do to help support you, to make, to be able to get you to Nationals, certainly we'd love to be able to, we'd love to be able to, if there's any way we can support that, I think there's...
Well, for this year, it's kind of, national season is over, but we have discussed as a group that that is, we haven't gone the last few years, even though we've gotten three bids, but the intention is to attend a national championship next year, so your approval in the fall will be greatly appreciated because we are going to discuss before the season starts, a location, that way I can come in to you before the state championship and we already know. So, moving forward, that would be greatly appreciated.
Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Great job.
I was going to just say two quick things. One is that I'm always impressed at the amount of giving back that the girls do to the younger, to the up-and-coming program, which Pete and I and Joe and the rest of us talk about so often, particularly from an athletic perspective, is building the pipeline. And Lord knows, we're trying to do more of it on the athletic side. But the one thing, too, and I just want to give credit to all of the athletes that come in, the one thing that I hear about is family. Like, you guys all are a team. You're close, you're tight. That kind of environment, I've heard time and time again from varsity athletes, JV athletes, freshman athletes that come in, is that fostering of kind of a, you know, not just team, but it's more than team. As Kristin just said, these are my, this is my family, I'm going to miss them. And I think that's something special that not everybody has.
Well, you know, I always let them know how much I care about them. I don't think that there's a week that goes by that they don't know how proud I am of them or how much I care about them. If they need anything, I'm always there. So, that is really great, but also within themselves, they are just there for each other and it's incredible to see if someone's having a bad day or someone's had a bad boy day or whatever the case may be. I mean, they're there for each other, so they, they're incredible. It always happens.
That's special. Like, that's a special environment, you know, and we should be proud of that. That should be recognized as well.
I always thought it was Bad Husband Day. I didn't know it was Bad Boy Day.
Well, there's Bad Boy Day, too. Let me tell you.
We all know what that is.
That would be for a closed organization.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good one. That's a Twitter pic.
That's all about the Twitter. Thank you, boys, for coming in. Thank you for having us.
All right. Next agenda item we have is the Woodland and Stacy Middle School Transition Update. Yeah, please.
We're going to have Craig lead off on that one.
Okay.
You're not a principal of Woodland anymore. Craig. Oh, okay. All right, just checking. I wrote it. I just wanted to start by thanking Tim and Nancy for their time tonight. Both schools have a lot going on these days and I know that they've been out quite a bit, so I appreciate their time. As you all know, last summer, we made a lot of transitions within the district. And before Tim and Nancy speak, I just wanted to underscore some of the transitions that took place. At Woodland, the staff and students had to get acclimated to a brand-new, beautiful building and also a new principal. And on both accounts, it was a significant upgrade. I think somebody laughed at that. There you go.
He's here all night, folks. Try the veal.
Do you stop that?
But despite the change, despite the change and the fact that the change is for the better, there's still change. So, I think it's important to highlight some of those. The facility more than doubled in size, making the new Woodland a huge space to manage for both students and staff. Additionally, the staff, the third and, the existing third and fourth grade staff welcomed the fifth grade staff members into their family. The fifth grade staff had to leave the familiarity of Stacy Middle School and acclimate themselves to the new, better leadership. Sorry not to Nancy, but my own. A new building and an elementary school mindset. At Stacy, the school community had to say goodbye to their fifth grade staff and welcome the eighth grade staff into their building. For the Stacy staff, this meant saying goodbye to colleagues, teammates, and friends, years in the making, and welcoming a whole new group of people into their climate and culture. The eighth grade staff had to leave the friendly confines of Middle School East and learn a whole new system at Stacy. They left a space that was, that they were much more comfortable in to a much larger space with three times as many people. They went from approximately 400 people to 1,200 people. The change meant no longer was the spotlight solely focused on one grade, but it had to be shared with three grades, the sixth and seventh graders as well. Finally, I just want to, I want everyone to remember that we spent 2015, '16 school year in transition planning with representatives from all three schools to try and work out any issues that may come out during the moves. I strongly believe that Nancy and Tim have done a tremendous job during the transition and working towards building a cohesive climate and culture for all staff, students, and families. With that, I did ask Tim and Nancy to have a couple of things prepared for everybody. And I want to, I want you guys to be aware of the questions that I asked them so that you know where their presentation went. So, the first thing I asked them was to describe the transition, what happened in the summer during the transition, and what kinds of culture-building activities are you still doing to get all the teachers working as a cohesive unit? The second thing I asked them was, how have the staff and students acclimated to the new building? And then lastly, what are some of the challenges you've had to overcome and are there any you are still working on? So, I'll turn it over to Tim and Nancy.
So, I have a lot to go over, so I just put together a little something for everybody so it'll be a little bit easier for you to follow along if you want to. So, imagine this. I was at the March School Committee meeting, talking with our team and specifically asked one of our student representatives, what is the best memory she's had of Stacy Middle School? She took a moment to reflect and then she said, "Just being, just being with my friends and teachers day-to-day, laughing, enjoying, just being here." This is what we want to celebrate as a new grade-level community as we close out our first year together, celebrating each other. That is what I hope students are able to do to close out their time on two separate events at the end of our school year this year, one being the Stacy Middle School Semi-formal Farewell Night and one being the farewell and promotion ceremony, for students to be able to laugh together, to enjoy together, and to be with each other one last time. Overall, the transition process went pretty well at Stacy Middle School. Some of the key highlights are listed down here for you. Before we even let our fifth grade staff members off to go off to Tim, who I know from a long time ago, each person got a farewell gift. It was a small gift, a token of everyone's appreciation. It was a mason jar with lifesavers in it and it said a little phrase on it, which I don't want to say here, so, but it was really cute. It went with the lifesavers. And there was a dessert bar that was offered for them, wishing them well as they went off on their new adventures to be with Tim and the Woodland staff. Overall, the transition process went pretty well at Stacy Middle School. Some of the key highlights are listed down here for you. Before we even let our fifth grade, uh, staff members off to go off to Tim, who I know from a long time ago, um, each person got a farewell gift. Um, it was a small gift, a token of everyone's appreciation. It was a mason jar with lifesavers in it, and it said a little phrase on it, which I don't wanna say here, so, but it was really cute. It went with the lifesavers. And there was a dessert bar that was offered for them, wishing them well as they went off on their new adventures to be with Tim and the Woodland staff. Uh, summer transition started very quickly on June twenty-third. All of a sudden, movers arrived to move all of the fifth grade materials out, moving them down to Tim at Woodland. On the twenty-fourth, electricians, electricians arrived to get the eighth grade classrooms set up, and then it just kept going. So, there was always movement in the building on July sixth. Technology implementation in all the grade-eight classrooms happened. On July seventh, movers arrived with all the eighth grade materials and placed them in all the assigned classrooms for the eighth grade, um, teachers. Uh, in between that time, there was lots of work. That work that I just kind of talked about expanded over the months of July into August. Um, then on August twelfth, we started to see some of the MHS tech team coming down to hook up all the computers and starting to get all the internet stuff hooked up for all of the teachers. A lot of teachers started coming in in August when we let them in to set up their classrooms and start to get acclimated to the building and to their schedules, as well as to just kind of start to feel comfortable in the building. Uh, during the beginning weeks of August, Mrs. Bertel and Mrs. McIntyre, who are two of our guidance counselors, who are also very much involved with the welcoming committee, spent their own time painting, repainting, I should say, decorating with their own money, and creating a faculty lounge to welcome all of our new team members. Um, on August twenty-sixth, this, all the science classroom installations in terms of sinks were finalized in room twenty-one and twenty-three. And on, then also on that same day, we had all of the foam quote boards that were in the Middle School East Media Center, positioned in the stairwells going up the main staircase at Stacy Middle School to welcome, um, the Middle School East staff. On the first day of school, the welcoming committee put together a nice breakfast for all of the teachers, trying to make sure that our new eighth-grade family felt comfortable walking into the building on the first day. Of course, during the eighth grade, um, the eighth grade started meeting, and the first time as team members. On August thirtieth, they did have the day to kind of acclimate to the building, um, sit down and talk with their teams, and start to set up their new classrooms. School opened, the first day went really well, and then off we went running, and we haven't stopped since, trying to make sure everyone's getting what they need, getting the materials they need, as well as, um, making sure we can move through with all of the programming from eighth grade into, into Stacy Middle School. One of the things I think is a highlight, and I feel really lucky to have Mrs. Formato, who is actually a gal who has a master's degree in library science, and we have her over at Stacy now. It, it was just hysterical watching her. Um, so I documented on September twelfth, I took a photo of her. She had unloaded eighty boxes of books and repositioned them on all of the shelves, as well as kind of realigned the way the library looked all by herself. It was quite a feat, and she was still smiling when it was over, so she did a great job. You know, technology transitions happens. Um, we had a new TCT template, which is a Teacher Collaboration Time template that was developed. New mission statement, new core values, Twenty-First Century Learning Expectations were developed as a new team because of the new grade configuration, which is a great thing, 'cause that document will lead us forward. Um, we have a Sunshine Club that was reestablished, that is doing kind of little snack things, um, here and there throughout the year for teachers. Our PTO is absolutely fabulous, putting on breakfasts and luncheons, as well as supportive activities for the students, as well as the staff sponsoring activity throughout the year. One of the great things is for the eighth grade teachers, they all have the same prep and the same lunch period, so they still are able to connect nicely with each other. I mean, they're all kind of positioned in the same areas as well, so that was a nice thing. Uh, faculty and staff are always invited to use the Human Performance Lab, which is a fitness facility downstairs, and some of the eighth grade teachers are starting to do that, as well as running those stairs, eighty-six, from top to bottom. Um, and we had a lot of teachers, I think there were like fourteen or so teachers participate in the Faculty Student Basketball Game during March Madness, which was nice. Um, we had a lot of teachers participating in all the student council types of things. Do we think we can get better at all the spirit and the culture? Sure we can. I mean, you have twelve hundred people in the building, and everybody wants a piece of somebody at every minute of the day. But I think what we're seeing is that people are very, very supportive of each other. Existing staff went out of their way to try to welcome new staff. New staff went out of their way to extend relationships to existing staff. So, I think after a year, things are going pretty well in terms of that kind of peer sharing and starting to care about each other, which is, I think, something that we tried to foster four years ago when, oh, actually, five years ago now, this is almost over as this first year, when this started being spoken about, and, uh, Middle School East staff were invited over to a lot of the faculty meetings, as well as some of the luncheon events that we would be having. Okay? We have lots going on right now. Um, the Washington DC, the Heritage Week, Grade Eight Foreign Language Wrap-Off. We're in the planning stages for two huge events at the end of the year, and the Sunshine Club is working to plan an end-of-the-year event for, um, the faculty and staff to celebrate the last day, surviving, I would say, the first year of the real transition. So, you know, in closing, change often results in a, in a myriad of emotions and challenges to managers' teams. We have to work to adjust to our new surroundings, to our new teammates. Um, time is always needed to develop protocols, and I, you know, when we talk about challenges, trying to develop all the new protocols with all of the new programs and getting those programs to fit into the logistics of Stacy Middle School, which is a very different structure than Middle School East because of the sheer number of students in there, um, is probably one of the biggest challenges. And not enough minutes in the day to try to make all that happen fast enough. Um, you know? How do I give you, give you a hug?
Yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay. Um, I think the development of the new core values and the learning expectations that support the school's mission statement will be a strong guiding document for us as our school continues to balance the middle-level child's academic, social, emotional, and physical needs. I think that's going to be a huge focus next year. Um, and each year will be an opportunity for us to continue to foster relationships and refine programming to excite, ignite, and engage students in Twenty-First Century Learning Opportunities. Overall, in my, my opinion, I think the faculty, staff, facilities, department, I cannot say enough about Rob Quinn. All of those things that I have just read to you. He was a partner in crime with me. I believe he is an unsung hero in this district on what he makes happen and continues to make happen, um, within Stacy Middle School, so things move smoothly behind the scenes for us. So, I can't take credit for a lot of all those things that I listed. That was Rob and his team as well, working in tandem with us. Overall, I think the faculty, staff, the facilities department, the central office, as well as all of our Stacy Middle School students transitioned well, bringing an A-game to the two sixteen, two seventeen school year. If you take a look, there's May calendar events that are coming up, all the things that are happening. There's quite a few. Um, the June calendar, calendar of events, existing activities, and then new activities from eighth grade. All the things that were really important to tradition and passion to people came forward, and we continue to try to find minutes to make all of these happen, but to make them happen well in the confines of our building structure. If you take a look at the next page, it says the Grade Eight Farewell Semi-formal Night. Um, that evening is, this stuff is going to be going out for the, to the children and the families on May fifteenth in a packet. This is actually the formal, if you guys just give me your eyes for a moment, this is the formal invitation that will be going home to the families. And there's a lot of steps within this night. It's going to be encompassing the entire building, so students are almost gonna experience each grade level in, in a different way. Each student's family is going to have the opportunity to, um, they're all going to receive this in this packet, a magnet that looks exactly like the new marquee board that our PTO gave us this year. Each family member's gonna be able to write a positive message for their child, and this will be put on the lockers before the memory event starts, the memory walk. Also, we were very lucky to have someone work with us closely. If you recognize, this is the actual pink granite that is on the Stacy Middle School building. And each child will be getting a memory, uh, a memory brick, we're calling this, at a station, before they head down to the final part of the program, where they're going to be able to write a really nice positive message for the students for the upcoming school year. Bulletin boards are often empty, but this will make sure that they're not. Okay? So, those are some of the things that are gonna go home. And parents are gonna be invited to participate in a portion of the, of the program, the initial part, which is the memory walk, where they can line the halls as the students process through before they go down into the dance and the game area. Okay? And along the way, they'll do selfie stations, 'cause middle school students just love selfies. The last, the next page is the memory walk procession route that we're planning. It looks like that's the way we're gonna go, but we're still tightening these things up. I just wanted to give you something to take a look at. The next page is actually the invitation we're working on for families for the Grade Eight Farewell and Promotion Ceremony, which will be taking, in, place in the gymnasium, hopefully. Um, again, we're trying to work out logistics with that, um, on the last day of school. And then below, you'll see each, each family will be allowed two tickets. And then, last page is the draft of the promotion certificate that every student will get in that ceremony.
And that's just, Nancy, just real quick, is that similar to sort of the, what used to be the last day of, was it the last day of school? At, at Middle School East, where the, we, the kids used to walk across the stage and.
We have no stage that's gonna be able to accommodate, so.
Right, no, I realize that. Yeah.
We're going to set it up similarly, but different to Stacy Middle School.
Got it.
Um, and they'll be in a really beautiful jacket like this, okay? So, with that being said, that last component is requiring a lot of logistical thought because of safety. Um, we're not a one, one-grade school, so I have a lot of concerns about how to be able to make that work in a nice way and then still make sure the other two grade levels are safe and sound in the building, and no one is flowing in and out of the building during the ceremony, 'cause that's, that's gonna be logistics that we need to talk about. So, um, those are some of the things we're still working on, and we have a lot of time. My focus right now is trying to, we have a conceptual framework for all of this, and this part, the formal night, is pretty squared away and ready to go, and this is almost ready to go, just the final logistics about safety and setup. But now the next big thing is Washington and Heritage Week, so, um, it looks like, if I can recall back, I think almost every important program from Middle School East is taking place in one way or another, maybe with a little bit of tweaking, um, at Stacy Middle School.
Pause there. Does anyone have questions for Nancy?
So, no, Nancy, I really, I think the, I, I love the idea of the semi-formal night. I think that's great. I'm sure the students do too. Um, I'm very pleased to see that a lot of the traditions that, you know, given the amount of transition that, you know, all three of you are, and, you know, all of you guys have gone through, your students have gone through, your staff has gone through. It's great to see, um, that there's, the Stacy twin, the, you know, the Stacy, you know, tweaks a little bit with some, but a lot of those transitions, a lot of the transition has gone so smoothly. And then some of the traditions are being carried over from, I think, sort of having that, having both sides of that is really important, and I'm sure your staff and your students really appreciate that, as the families do as well. So, I think that's, that's wonderful. I certainly am glad that, and, and I had not, not surprised that, uh, you know, you've done such a great job with all the planning on this stuff.
Well, I have to let you know, I have a lot of help called Carol.
Yes.
She's absolutely fabulous. We're like peanut butter and jelly in terms of I start going too fast, and she's just writing things down, and it works. But there's, um, a component that I need to talk about with the eighth grade teachers, 'cause they're really important to this process about what that program is going to look like. And we're going to be talking about that on Tuesday and during contractual time.
Great. And then just the last piece on that, just, um, around the safety concerns, certainly understand that, certainly even, uh, given the large and the size of the building, along with everyone that's gonna be potentially coming through that, where, you know, not everybody will be sitting in that room. Um, I'm sure you've already, you know, taken this step, but certainly, you know, reaching out with, uh, to Chief Lauflin through Milford Police Department. They've always been such a great support partner for us. Uh, I'm sure any, any, either, either from a consulting perspective or additional support and staff there, I'm sure he would be more than happy to step up, as he always has in the past.
Yeah, Office aggression is wonderful to us as well. I have to always say, he's fabulous.
Yep, which is great.
Um, just another logistical concern is getting everybody in and then everybody out before the buses are in the bus loop by ten-ten. So. There's a lot of logistics that we're trying to work out, so it, it will get done. It's just, I wanna make sure it's done well and done right. So, like I said, if we could steal some more minutes, it's just running, constantly running, trying to keep ahead of the new things, and trying to develop protocols for the new things, to make sure they go smoothly for everybody.
Good.
Thank you.
We'll comment that.
Yeah, I just wanna add one comment. Um, I think in, I almost feel embarrassing, this is a parent of an eighth grader and a school committee member, but I think that so much attention has been paid to Woodland, because the school is new, and the principal's new, and everything is just so in-your-face new. And I guess I never really stopped to think until you put this together tonight about the impact. It just, I guess in my mind, felt like, oh, they're just moving across the street. And to think about the logistics and the dramatic changes to the physical plant and to the staff, um, I, I think we, we haven't talked a lot about it, and, but you've been going along for a hundred and however many days at this point. Um, obviously with a lot left to be done, a lot under your belt already. And I think, kind of as Scott mentioned, the thought that's gone into making the ending special for the eighth graders, and including the parents, I think, too, um, even though they're eighth graders and they don't really want you around very much, it's, it's nice to include that element, so thank you.
And thank you. Uh, like I, the team at Stacy Middle School is wonderful from top to bottom, and that's what makes it a good place to be.
All right. Thanks, Nancy.
Sorry I was long, but I want you to understand everything that's happening.
No, it's good.
Thank you.
Ten?
Nice report. Thank you. So, I didn't prepare a, a packet. Craig said, "Keep it simple, keep it informal," and then Nancy went and brought a packet, so the competitor to me now. Right, she brought her A-plus game. All right, so I gotta top that somehow. All right. Uh, so, uh, our work, uh, moving into the new Woodland and transitioning to the new Woodland started really in this room, um, for a good five to six weeks. Woodland School was the TRC at, at the high school. Um, and, uh, we knew it was gonna be hard to kind of open a school or, or begin the, the new school year not being in a school, not being in the actual physical place. And, uh, so, it, they're really, the, the work started this summer, and it started with Chris Seng, our new assistant principal, Allison Cafarella, our new administrative assistant, and Lori Pinto, our new secretary. The four of us sitting in this room together, not really knowing each other. I mean, I knew Allison, and trying to, how do we do this? And getting up to date on X Two, our student information system, and our, you know, our, our financial software, and our personnel software, and this was all new to all of us. And so, we're, we spent, you know, a couple of weeks in here doing that, just trying to get up to speed on just the, the logistics of how Milford works, 'cause all of us were new to that. And we're spending, you know, as much time as we could, uh, hiring and filling positions, interviewing in here when we could. If there was off time, uh, we had little, almost like baseball cards of our staff that we were flipping through, just trying to get to know names of who are, who are these people, so that we could, you know, start to put names and faces together, so that we could greet people by name when we first got to meet them. Um, that was important to us. Uh, reviewing handbooks, getting familiar with district, uh, the district strategic plan. Um, that's how we spent, you know, a good couple of weeks, because we couldn't be in the building. You know, we could go over there every now and then for a five-minute walkthrough, just to see how things were going, but that's all we had. So, we're trying to do as much as we could here in, in the TRC. Um, and that was certainly a challenge. Uh, we were able to get into the building the second week of August, and by we, I mean myself, Chris, Allison, Lori, and Lisa Kincaid was starting to come on board there. And we had a folding table, and we had to borrow some chairs from the high school. And that's all we had for an office space. Um, it was challenging, 'cause we had a lot of, you know, of, of technical work to do, um, and we didn't have Wi-Fi. We didn't have printers. We didn't have copiers. So, we're trying to do that, running back and forth to the high school and here, so, um, that certainly made it challenging. You know, wearing our hard hats and construction vests and, and having work go on all around us. Um, so that, you know, was certainly difficult as well. But we were able to, once we were on-site, start to plan the, the logistics of the building. Like, how is the traffic flow gonna be? And when I, by traffic flow, I mean not just the cars and, you know, buses, but the traffic flow within the building. Kids passing, like, where, how are we gonna do this? How are kids gonna move about the building? Planning all these things that you take for granted, because they've been established in a building before, from, you know, where are kids gonna line up for recess, to how are they gonna go through the lunch lines, to, you know, evacuation planning, all these things that are just in place, uh, in a school building, we had to do from scratch. So, it was really overhauling our handbook, overhauling all our policies and procedures, and trying to walk it and be in the building and see how this is gonna work, knowing full well that, once you put a thousand kids into the building, this may all look very different. Getting a thousand kids into a building and a thousand kids out quickly and safely and efficiently, um, works one way on paper, and then when you put it into practice, it looks very different. So, um, we were able to start to do that. Um, we got in to our, our staff, our teachers, who were chomping at the bit, and like, I was getting emails like every day. Is today the day we can get in? How about tomorrow? Tomorrow, can we get in tomorrow? We couldn't get in till, until, um, August twentieth was our first day in with staff. Boxes were being brought in, the eighteen-wheelers full of all their stuff was being brought in, furniture was being assembled, so we started getting into the building on the twentieth, uh, with their staff. So, really, the morning of, Monday morning, uh, at seven o'clock, I had our first unofficial staff meeting. I met people in the cafeteria with construction happening everywhere around them. They walked in, and the first thought was, oh my goodness, this is, no way we're gonna be able to open this in a week. And, you know, it was a lot of, we'll get there. Don't worry, it's gonna come together. And just talking about what are some of the, you know, the rules and regulations for unpacking? Where are you gonna put all your boxes when you're done with them? How do we hang things up on the wall? Where are things gonna go? Don't worry, that's coming. It's on the way. A, a lot of that kind of reassurance started happening. So, faculty got in that first week, and it was fantastic that first, that, that week of August, just being able to walk around the building. And, and I was going through notebook after notebook of, what do you need? What do you need? And just writing down, like, what are the issues that you're having? What are you missing? But you could start to see a school come together. It was a building. And then you start to see these, the classrooms, and teachers are putting their desks together and the groupings that they want, and they're doing bulletin boards, and they're hanging up, you know, the, the, the rules and the regulations and the schedules, and all of this starts to come together, and all of a sudden, you're like, there it is. Like, now this is starting to feel like a school for kids, rather than just a beautiful building. On August twenty-seventh, Saturday morning, August twenty-seventh, we had our first open house for the community, um, and the Woodland community. We couldn't open it up to everybody, but I would say, you know, just by my rough estimate of greeting everybody who came in and out of the door, we had several thousand people. We couldn't open it up to everybody, but I would say, you know, just by my rough estimate of greeting everybody who came in and out of the door, we had several thousand people. I would guess, if I had to guess, three, three thousand, three thousand five hundred people come in and out, just to tour the building, see what it was about, and got a look at it. I think we opened the doors at nine o'clock. I mean, there were still ladders and construction happening at eight fifty-nine in the police. Alright, take it down, get out of the way. Kids are coming in. And as soon as it was over, I think at twelve-thirty, at twelve-thirty-one, the ladders were going back up and construction was continuing. And it continued all through that weekend. August thirty-first, we had, you know, our first staff meeting and away we went. And really, the first day that we got together was a day of just introductions, you know, getting to know people. For a lot of staff members, it was, it might have been their first time meeting me, getting to know me, same with, with Chris Sang, our assistant principal, and getting to know each other. So, doing, you know, different team building and introductory activities together, and then just talking about just some very broad goals for the year. How are we going to work together? What are some of the logistics that we need to know in the building? What are some of the things and traditions about the old Woodland School that we want to keep? What are some things that we need to do new? Talking about the technology, just setting some very broad goals, like, you know, this year is our year to just, it's, it's a year of coming together. And it's going to be a year of adjusting and being flexible. The second day was reviewing all of the logistics and protocols, you know, safety drills, where we're lining up for recess, how the kids are going to get picked up from lunch, all of that kind of stuff. Prepping for students was a lot of that. A lot of our teaching assistants and behavior assistants came in on their own time during that, those days, just to help and get to know the building, get to know the system. So, I really want to applaud our assistants who, who came in on their own time to do that. That spoke volumes to me about their dedication to Woodland School, its students and, and our mission together. So, that was fantastic. And then, from there, opening the building, it's, you know, I've been saying it all year, it's, it's a year of firsts. Every, everything that we do is a year of firsts. Alright, this is the first time, you know, the first lunch, let's see how this goes. And it was, here's our plan, here it goes, and then it's just, let's see how it goes. And then, adjusting. And that's what this whole year has been about, is putting a plan in place, seeing how it works, and then trying to figure out which variable we want to tweak to improve it, to, to make it better for kids, make it safer, make it better for teachers. So, it's been a year of doing that. You know, I, I recall very vividly our first Thursday. And what we discovered on our first Thursday was when fourth grade finished their lunch, they were going back to their classrooms, fifth grade was coming out of their classrooms going on for recess, and third grade was all going to different specials. So, all, we figured out that just about all one thousand students were in motion at that same time, and they all seemed to converge on that main staircase at the same time. And that's not something that you can see in the schedule and play it out until it happens. And it was looking at that and being like, this is not going to work. Alright, so, let's figure out a different way to do this. Things like, you know, our first, like, forty-five degree day in January, when there was snow on the ground and the back playground was not accessible. But it's forty-five degrees and you've got to get kids outside on a beautiful January day like that. Where are we going to go? How are we going to do this? Where are we going to get the kids to get outside? What spaces can we use? Little things like that. It's been a year of doing that of, of firsts. Like, okay, this didn't work. How are we going to fix it? So, I can't praise our staff enough and our students enough for their flexibility, their understanding, their patience, their resilience. You know, when things weren't going the way we wanted it to go, no one panicked. It was, okay, we'll figure it out, and let's just try again tomorrow a different way. It was, it has been like that all year. At the beginning of the year, we also made a very intentional decision to hold off on some of our school-wide expectations and our PBIS expectations and our PBIS lessons, so that we could see how everything played out. You know, we kind of went with some just basic common sense rules for kids, just to, these are the rules to keep kids safe. For example, on the playground, we went out and we said, alright, so here are some basic rules that we're going to all live by, let's teach the kids that, and then let's see how it goes. And from there, fixing it and saying, alright, this is what we need to do differently. Now we need to teach the kids to do this and, and not that. Stairway travel. If students had gone to Brookside or the old Woodland School, they hadn't ever used stairs in, in their school for, for five years, six years. And some of our Memorial School students used stairs, but Brookside and the old Woodland didn't have any stairs. So, teaching kids how to use the stairs and travel up and down the stairs was something we had to do. And we recognized that once we got into the building. So, we, we made the decision intentionally to hold off on doing that until we could see how it all worked. Come mid-year, we started to then say, alright, December, January, we know what our issues are, we know where our hotspots are, let's start fixing them. Let's start teaching the kids what we want to do, how we expect them to be, how we expect things to happen. And it's been fantastic since then. And, and not that it wasn't fantastic before, but we, we saw a difference. Like, now we know how this is going to happen, how this is going to work. As far as coming together as a staff, some of the things that we've done is just, we've been very thoughtful and intentional during staff meetings and any opportunity we have to intentionally mix groups, rather than just have people sit where they want or work with, work with a group of people that they want. People naturally tend to go to the people that they know, the people that they're most comfortable with. So, we intentionally tried to mix and match groups of people, so that they were working with people that they hadn't known, they hadn't worked with before, just to get people to get together. But even still, to this day, with a staff as large as we have, and Nancy, you know this, we, we still have people that are introducing themselves to, you know, they're still, who are you and what do you do? And it's, and we're in almost May. So, that's, that's been a challenge, is, is, is the school gets so busy, as Nancy described, that we, sometimes you don't see people for days, months. You may never pass them in the hall, and it's, who are you and what do you do? So, that, that's been a challenge. But we, we've tried, you know, to make very intentional efforts to get groups of people together and mix them and match them in different ways. We've had some social events, our team, some team building events. Our Sunshine Committee has been instrumental in doing that. It's a group of teachers that are working together on just the climate and culture of the building. So, holding things like a staff luncheon, doing a scavenger hunt, doing a, a puzzle room, these are things that we're doing before school, after school. Trivia nights have been fantastic. During the year, we've had a couple of opportunities just to get people together, just to talk about Woodland and the way things are done at Woodland. So, we've had open forums as a faculty, anyone who wants to come and talk about what's on your mind. You know, is there a problem that you want to talk about? Is there, you know, a success story that you want to share? Is there an educational issue that's kind of on, on your mind that you want to, you know, bring up for discussion among the group? We've had a faculty senate that meets about once a month, where representatives of different groups of people, we just get together and we just talk about what's going on at Woodland School. So, we've had lots of opportunities for staff and administration dialogue. You know, as we've talked about many times at Woodland, a school this big and a staff this big, none of us have experience with that. So, we're doing this together. And there's been a, a great partnership between our administrative staff and our, and our, and our faculty in, in working together and working out some of the kinks and, and talking about the things that are going really well. So, I, you know, I think our staff and students are, are very well-acclimated to the building. Certainly, our fitness levels are a lot higher. There's, there's a lot less huffing and puffing going up the stairs. I think a lot of people have sat there, they're very proud to show off their Fitbits and their Apple Watches about how many steps they get in, for sure. I think we, we calculated from the nurse's office to the gym, it's, it's a little less, just a slight fraction less than a quarter of a mile.
Oh, my goodness.
So, just, you know, going back and forth there a couple of times, you know, you get your fit, you get your, your exercise in. Certainly, staff and students, we, we cannot say enough about the space we're in. We love it. The classrooms are fantastic. The breakout spaces are utilized non-stop. The common areas are always in, in play. It's just been a, there's so many opportunities for teachers to teach in different and creative ways, given the spaces that, that we have available to us. I've conducted a number of tours from, of, of surrounding towns and not even towns that are close by, they, they want to come and see the new, the, the new Woodland. So, I've got a tour route, it all worked out, but, you know, the, 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 the members of the Commonwealth that come into the building to look around the building, I just can't say enough about the space. They just, they rave about it. Between the flexible learning space, the, all the natural light that's pouring into that building, just some of the thoughtful features about safety and security that are, that are incorporated into the building, you know, we, we can't say enough about the space that we're in. Certainly, the technology has been, you know, a real exciting feature for staff and students. It's been engaging, it's been motivating. The Chromebooks arrived at, at the middle of October, all our Chromebook cards arrived, and they've been in non-stop use since. It's just, you can't walk down the hall without seeing kids using technology to enhance and support learning everywhere you go. And, and there's, there's, teachers are, they're embracing it. And I set a very, very simple and modest goal with technology at the beginning, beginning of the year. It's wherever you are now as a, as a staff member, wherever you are now, just be a little bit better by the end of the year. I'm not saying you have to, you know, have this proficiency or this skill. Wherever you are now, just get a little bit better. And by setting the bar maybe a little bit lower in that sense, I think it just encourages people to want to take some risks and want to do some more. Matt Joseph, our, our technology director, has been phenomenal in supporting us with that, those efforts, in providing a couple of different professional learning opportunities for teachers. And, you know, we had our Techapalooza in March at Woodland School, which was very well-attended. We had a lot of Woodland staff members there, as well as, as members of, of, of the district there. But the technology has been just embraced wholeheartedly. And I'm looking forward to, to that next year as well, without giving away too much of our school improvement plan, which is coming on June first. So.
That was a great teaser.
Yeah, thank you. Our playground is, is a hit townwide. You know, it, it's the day that it opened, and I'm sure you know this, it, it's the best playground in town. It is constantly in use. I think that's maybe a little bit of a challenge, is after-school hours, you know, we still have our after-school program there, but everyone in town wants to be there. And if you go there on a Saturday or a Sunday, it's in use all the time. It's a, it's a hu, it's, it's a tremendous asset to Woodland School. It's a tremendous asset to the community. So, we're very proud of our playground. It's certainly a highlight of the tour as well. So, some, you know, some challenges, and, and Craig said some things that he asked us to, asked me to talk about, some challenges that we've overcome, some things that we're still working on. Certainly, you know, getting to know each other and building that community within Woodland School, that's an ongoing thing. I, you know, I think, you know, all the professional literature that I've read about, you know, climate and culture building, is it takes multiple years to do. It doesn't happen overnight. And so, that's certainly something that's always going to be at the forefront, front of our mind, is that culture and climate are, are so important. So, building that trust between our faculty members, between, you know, teachers, as well as between faculty and administration, just coming together as a team there is, is always going to be a, a challenge and something that we're doing together. Bridging that gap between our third and fourth grade staff and, and culture that the old Woodland had with our fifth grade team that's coming down, that's going to be something that's, we're continuing, continually working on. We've made a lot of great progress and a lot of great strides there, but there's still some of that getting to know you of, how do you do things in the fourth grade versus how do you do things in fifth grade? And, and using our physical proximity to, to learn and get our staff members together to do that. Our schedule, as Nancy said, it has certainly been a challenge, and that's something that we're looking to address next year. There's just not enough hours in the day. And the schedule that we have built and some of the contractual requirements that we have on the, from the teacher's end, make for a very, very tight schedule. We have, right now, no transition time between periods. So, people are expected to physically be from one place to the next and with no time passing. And that's just not going to happen. It's just physically impossible. So, building that into the schedule to just be realistic about, it takes time to get from one place to the next. So, the schedule is something that we're going to be working on in this coming year to address some of those challenges. As I said, you know, the, the, managing the logistics and the traffic flow of such large groups has certainly, I think, been a challenge. I, I think we've done pretty well. You know, getting three hundred and forty kids from the cafeteria back to their class in a quiet, orderly, safe way, and doing it quick enough so that they can get back to the learning that's at hand or get to their next class, is, is something that we're, we're getting better at every day and thinking about every day, as well as just the traffic flow on the outside of the building. Getting the car loop running, getting the bus loop running, getting all of that happening, where we have two entrances and exits that are about fifteen feet away from each other. So, you've got lefts and rights happening, and it's, there's a lot of traffic happening out front. So, managing that has been, I, I think, we've been fairly successful with that. So, those are some of the things that have been going on in our transition. As we look forward to the end of the year, we're going to have a fifth grade family night. So, students and family members, with the help of the PTO, it's kind of like a farewell to Woodland for our fifth grade families. So, our PTO is helping to plan that. That's going to be on, I believe, June second. Looking forward as well to welcoming in our new third graders. So, we're, we'll be having a family night, or a parent information night for our second grade parents, as well as having our third, our second grade students come up to visit Woodland School. That's, that's an important part of the end of the year. And certainly the field days. And one of the highlights of the field days is we're really hoping, knock on wood, that we're going to be able to actually use the Woodland, the new Woodland field for the first time on Field Day. So, I think that will be a real special treat for our kids to kind of christen the new field for Field Day. So, that's something we're, we're looking forward to.
Good. Thanks, Tim. Now, open it up, Mike.
First of all, I want to thank the both of you for coming and doing the great job that you do. But, Tim, I got to ask you first the significance of the clothespin on your tie.
Oh, thank you for mentioning.
Are you saying a new style trend? Because I'm going to stop at Target's and I can pick up some clothespins.
No, thank you. So, so many of our teachers use a, a classroom management technique of clipping up or clipping down to help kids self-regulate their, their behavior. And as kids are doing the right thing and modeling safe, responsible, and respectful behavior, they get clipped up the chart. And at the top of the chart is clip up to the principal. And a friend of mine, a third grader named Travis, clipped up to the principal today. And he's been, he's been the only one to do that so far. And so, I challenged him actually at the end of the day. I said, Travis, you know, there's still some time left. Do you think that you can clip up to the superintendent? And at the end of the day, he came by and he said he did. So, I wore this today, because I have to get a selfie, and I know Dr. McIntyre loves the selfies, of, of, of Trav, the Travis clip on Dr. McIntyre's clip, I said, he's going to clip up to the superintendent. And I think this might be the first student who's ever clipped up to the superintendent.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty awesome. Alright, awesome.
I hope it was impressive.
What's going on Twitter?
Assistant superintendent.
I need to take that clip back, because he's got to work on, he starts back at zero again tomorrow, so he's got to work his way back up.
But I think, I, I think what's important for the, for the public to understand is that, and, and not to take away from the great work that the two of you have done this year, is that the district overall started out with a new superintendent, a new assistant superintendent, opened the or one of the largest elementary schools in the state, took a culture in a school that was five, six, and seven, and changed it to six, seven, and eight. And that seven and eight age group, Nancy, you can speak to it, is a, it's a big culture shock. But you were able to, to pull all that off. And I have to be honest with you, and I said this to Dr. McIntyre many times, the first week that school started, I, I was just waiting. I was like, my phone is just going to light up like, and I have to honestly say, here it is, almost May, and I have not had one parent reach out to me and say anything negative to me about this district at all, about the major transition that we just put this district through, because it's major. Because think about it, it's your new superintendent, now everybody's got to kind of learn, you know, Dr. McIntyre. And now Craig is the assistant superintendent. Everybody's, wow, he's got a different, kind of a different philosophy. And then, you know, the culture of the school is changing.
That's putting it mildly, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm just saying, I just want to say to you, thank you. Great job. I couldn't be, you know, more proud to sit here as a school committee member. Have everybody in this district. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have to say, I, I want to thank Dr. McIntyre for a lot of that as well, is there are many times where I called him up and I said, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to do this, or I'm not sure we can do this, or I just, you know, ah, and just texted him. And, and he, you know, his calm, steady hand and always like, take a deep breath, it's going to be alright. He's been, he's been awesome with that. So, he's, he's helped out tremendously in, in making that transition.
Again, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments or questions?
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, one, I think you are the picture of resiliency. And you didn't mention a single thing about curriculum instruction, report cards, MCAS, discipline, all of the things that have been happening seamlessly all year long with the building projects. But all of those things have just continued to happen, and the weekly updates, letting families know what's going on in that brand-new building with that brand-new structure. I think it's really been incredible. And I remember very clearly on that Saturday, open house, I thought you were going to keel over from pure exhaustion. And you look a little more rested now, but the hours and hours that it has taken to get that building off the ground, I do think it's just a miraculous act, and the year's almost over and you've pulled it off, so thank you sincerely.
No, I think even just things, and I know you talked about it during your presentation, just to give, just an appreciation, you even talked about just walking the stairs, which just, and for those that may be sitting at home, and I, when you first said it, I kind of chuckled to myself, and it actually very quickly brought back a memory to actually, it took like the first, like, month of school, when we were students, going to Stacy Middle School for the very first time, because to your point, in the old, one on the old Brookside, which is where all of the students came from at that point, there weren't any stairs. It took like a week, it took two to three weeks just to teach them, yeah, you go on the left or you go on the right, which way you're going. Just something as simple as that, and that's not even in the top thousand things that you, that you all have tackled, and really just across the district, as Mike touched on, new superintendent, new assistant superintendent, new IT director, new special ed director, new principal, new assistant principal, largest elementary, I mean, it's, it has been an unbelievable year of transition here in Milford Book Schools, and certainly the two of you have had, we'll call it courtside seats, to watch all of this and be very active members. So certainly, congratulations. And to Mike's point, I certainly sat there and was waiting for my phone to ring as well, and saying, well, here it comes, I'm waiting, I'm just, I'm sitting here waiting for my phone to ring, and it hasn't. Except for on positive things, which is actually a very good thing. So I have had some phone calls, but they've been all positive, which has been good about everything, which has been great. So certainly kudos to both of you guys, and we're very happy to have you guys continue to lead the teams, and congratulations on a good two-thirds of the year. We'll get the last third left.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, as you just heard from the committee, we really appreciate everything that you've been doing and all the long hours that you've put in. And both you've talked very highly about the staff, and it's great to see everyone pulling in the same direction. It's really critical, especially with all the transitions and everything that's changing, to get everybody on the same page and everybody moving in the right direction. So appreciate all the work you're doing, and thanks for coming in tonight and giving a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Nice job, Craig. You did great.
That's why you got here.
Surround yourself with good people, right? That's what you need to do.
I'm going to get you a coffee.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to come up?
Oh, sure.
So the next item we have is John Kennedy, who's with Nezdeck, the New England School Development Council.
That's it.
Thanks for your patience.
No problem. Okay. Does everybody have a copy of the?
No, we do not. Over here.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to extend my thanks to you for inviting us to attend the meeting this evening, or inviting me to represent Nezdeck. And we have been asked to present information regarding the possibility of a demographic study coupled with a facility study, which would lead to a, I believe, a long-range facility plan for the, for the district. So, I'm going to take you through this, and some of it we'll move through quickly, I'm not going to read it to you, but if you take a look at the first page, just some general background about Nezdeck, we have been in operation for over sixty-five years, and the organization emanated out of the Harvard School of Education. We are a nonprofit. Currently, our central office is located in Marlborough, Massachusetts, right up 495. We're about twenty, probably twenty-five minutes from here, except in the early morning, when it can be two hours. But it's a, it's an easy, easy trip generally. And we have this year in excess of two-hundred-and-fifty member districts throughout New England, and we are very pleased with that. As I mentioned to the building committee, I spoke to them earlier, one of the things we're very pleased with is, out of the two-hundred-and-fifty-plus districts, over two-hundred of them have been members for over ten years. And we believe that that's an indicator that we have been successful in achieving our goal, which is to help districts solve problems. And so we're involved in a number of different project areas. Most of them fall into four or five categories. We are involved, each year, we do approximately, this year, I was just talking to my colleague, and this year, we have worked on three-hundred-and-twenty-three thus far, sets of enrollment projections for communities throughout New England. And we typically do those on an annual basis and update them so that the districts have the information. So that's a big part of our operation, along with, we are involved in strategic planning. We also are involved in executive searches for districts. We work on demographic studies and facility best-use studies. And so those last two, coupled with the enrollment projections, are the pieces that we would be discussing and working on for this district should we move forward with the project. So if you turn to the next page, with regard to the demographic enrollment analysis and the facility best use, first of all, the demographic and enrollment analysis. When a district is thinking long range, it's, we believe it's very important that a demographic, an expansive demographic analysis take place. Because obviously, one of the key factors that will affect your decision-making as you get on the road will be, you know, what are we going to be looking at with regard to enrollments? And so what we typically do in a situation like this is we do an expanded demographic analysis, and it involves a number of things. We work very closely with the U.S. Census Department, and they put out periodically updates in terms of projections, especially with regard to age cohorts. And so that's obviously a very important thing for any community. We also get involved in information with regard to the three primary factors that are going to affect your enrollments over time. Number one, births. And as I mentioned to the group earlier, children born this year will be, most of them, your kindergarten students five years down the road, but they'll have an impact on your school district for a period of eighteen years. And so every year, births are a very important indicator of what the future holds. And other two factors that come into play, number one, is new home construction within a community. So we're always in touch with the planning department to see what is, A, already approved, and B, what is in the approval pipeline. And that gives us an indicator, and we have some ways of estimating, you know, how that will work out, are they a single-family, you know, and so we get the details on that information. The third factor is having to do with existing home sales, and for that, we use the Warren Group, which is a regional organization which tracks growth in each community. And also, we talk to local realtors that are recommended to us by the school department. And so we get a sense in terms of, what are the trends, what houses are, or what's the price range? Just some general information with regard to demographics, there are some key factors out there that are obviously having an effect. Massachusetts and many sections of New England are definitely out of the housing downturn. And we are seeing homes selling rapidly. We are seeing prices increasing significantly. Demand is, is high, and we can tell that because prices continue to grow, go up. And so this is an important factor, and, and supply is very limited thus far. Realtors will tell us that a properly priced house in this region can sell within a weekend. That's how, how heavy the demand is. Two other general factors, I should have mentioned these earlier, but did not, but two other general factors that come into play nationally. One is the boomers. They are turning sixty-five at the rate of ten thousand a day on the national scene, and that is going to continue for another eleven years. They also, many of them don't like to shovel snow. And many of them are living in, as empty nesters, and so there are opportunities developing for them to move to, and downsize to condominiums, and/or to become snowbirds. And so as a result of that, who is going to buy a three- or four-bedroom home?
Families.
Sure, families with children. The other piece that is tied to that, which is a significant factor, is the millennials. Born between nineteen eighty-two and two thousand and four, bigger number than the boomers, fifty-seven million. They have been very, very different, however, in that they have been slow to marry, many of them have very high college debt, and they also have been slow to have families and buy homes. What we have seen in just the last twenty-four months is there is a change. The oldest of the millennials are now thirty-four, going to thirty-five years of age. So they are making decisions saying, if we're going to have a family, this is the time we're going to do it. And so the group that has had the lowest birth rate of any generation in the last four is now starting to increase its childbirth, family size. And they also, because rents in this area have started to skyrocket, they are also making decisions, we are seeing, to purchase single-family homes. Okay? So those are some of the factors that are out there. We're going to be exploring those with regard to Milford specifically, should we move forward. And we feel that we can provide you with an excellent analysis of what the future holds. Now, with regard to the facility study itself, best-use study, we will be, that picks up on the next page. We will be, we follow a process that works very well. And what we typically do is get information from the school district in advance with regard to programming, initiatives, so on, so that we get advanced information that can lead us to take a look at the facilities. We also send out to each of the building principals a template and ask them to complete the template, and that gives us very significant information that is specific to that particular school. Having that in hand, we then schedule and conduct a site visit at the school, where we meet with the building principal, we review the template and come up with any questions that are, need to be answered. We get from the building principal a sense of, you know, how the facility is currently accommodating programming needs, and any issues that the principal may be aware of with regard to, you know, impediments to meeting future programming needs that may be tied to the facility. And then after we have done that, we can, we conduct a walkthrough of the building while it's in session. And that helps us to see, oftentimes, the principal could tell us, see, that's what I was referring to, that type of thing. So it's very important that we're there while the students are in the building. And we also observe, we have a list of things that we look for that are helpful to us. With that done, we then have a team meeting of the Nezdeck team, and we then begin to do a capacity analysis for each of the schools. And with the capacity analysis, there are two capacities that we list. The first is the current operating capacity, which is based on the numbers that are provided to us with regard to class sizes, and also the use of the building under present circumstances. So what that might mean is possibly, we see this in a lot of schools, one of the things that schools did not do when they were constructing back twenty years ago or ten years ago, is we see in many schools that there is a shortage of small-group instruction space. And so oftentimes closets, things of that nature, will be converted into small-group instruction areas, things along those lines. Current operating capacity will count that as a space that is an instructional space. When we get to planned operating capacity, that's a different story, and we do not count spaces which were not designed or what we view as are not appropriate for providing or accommodating programming needs. We would also not count portable structures, if that were the case, in a, in a particular school, because they have a short lifespan, and so that would, that would come into play. So planned operating capacity takes into consideration a circumstances that are suitable for instruction, and it also takes into consideration future programming needs, and so we move with that. All right? Once we have developed planned and, and current operating capacity, we move forward to options. But before that, there are three or four pages in your section here that talk in terms of changes that have occurred, and we are aware of these, and I'm sure you folks are as well, of, you know, thirty, forty years ago versus now. How many of us have ever said, heard someone say, back in my day, this is the way they did it? And, well, we all know that things have changed, haven't they? And even since maybe some of us were in school, things have changed. If you were not in school seven or eight years ago, things have changed tremendously, especially in the area of technology. You know, we heard the principal speaking about, you know, the fact that his new building, Woodland, is, accommodates the technological needs. Many buildings that were built in the fifties, sixties, seventies, or even the early nineties were not equipped to handle many of these, the needs. So there have been tremendous changes that we, we just outlined here. If you look through the elementary changes, that you're going to find, most of them are also repeated at the high school and the middle school levels. But what, what we see is classroom sizes are bigger. Why? Because they're involved in project work now. That's an important piece of it. We see that in many elementary schools today, they have either structured within the classroom... We see that in many elementary schools today, they have either structured within the classroom a science work area, which is a, has to have a bare floor and usually a sink and so that, and a, a table so that they can do experiments. Or, we're seeing in many elementary schools for their STEM programs, we're seeing their science, technology, or engineering math, we're seeing that they have science labs. And they are, they have begun to equip, all right? Special ed. In two thousand, the nation pretty much went toward a, an inclusive special ed model. However, there is still a very significant need for pullout, small group instruction spaces for both special ed and ELL students. And so, those things didn't exist back fifteen, twenty, thirty years ago. They did not have those, that type of space. And so, there have just been many, many changes and that's why we include the then and now piece. I'm not going to go through the high school or the middle school, other than just to say that there have been very significant changes in both of their structures as well. And they reflect the same kinds of issues that we referenced in the elementary. All right? So, now, if you go to the definition of capacity, we've already talked about this somewhat, but I want to point out that we use a different approach than that used by architects. And we count, we do obviously take into consideration square footage, especially classroom size, but we also count rooms using the perspective of the school principal. And you heard the principals talking this evening about, you know, scheduling spaces, providing adequate space and so on and so forth. For example, if there is, and many districts are moving away from this now, but if there is, for example, a, a technology lab, we do not count the technology lab when we compute capacity. Because in every instance, when the students go to the technology lab, they're vacating their current classroom. And so, it would be a double count really and that's not an appropriate way to measure school capacity. The other thing with square footage is, you know, you've seen it, I'm sure, you can walk into many buildings and you'll see a foyer area that might have as much as two thousand square feet, none of which is used for instruction. Okay? So, that's, that's another piece that we make sure we, we take into consideration and, we don't want to over-count the school's capacity. Okay? So, when we, we have current operating capacity, planned operating capacity corrects deficiencies and it takes care of programming needs and it also, this is an important piece, it also tries to make sure that there is parity and equity among buildings, all right, when we're, when we're dealing with that. And you can see in many schools, that's a very difficult issue, especially if you have two, if you have the same grade level at several buildings, then the question becomes one, are they getting the same access to programming? All right? Once we have computed the capacity, we move to the last step and that last step is development of potential options for the district. And with the options, we make sure that they are, in our view, before an option comes forward, we make sure that we believe it's viable. And we use an independent analysis, which is based on, you know, best practice. And we make sure the options are viable, we take a look and make sure that the option would have sufficient capacity for students. We, we advise a ten percent capacity cushion at each school. That way, a district doesn't run into the problem of having to switch every other year students and I'm sure you know what that can be like, if you have to start reconfiguring grades on a, on a frequent basis. And so, we take into consideration all of those factors and then, each of the options that we present will have a listing of what we consider to be the advantages and also the challenges that the district would face in choosing that option. And that essentially is the process and we find that it works very well. Questions?
Thanks, John. Any questions from the committee?
So, a couple of things. So, first off, thank you so much for, for some great information, great insight into what your process looks like and what you're going to be looking at. And I think both pieces, in my opinion, are needed in, I'm sure, many districts, but certainly in this one. Obviously, we've had a, we've an ongoing demographic change, we've obviously have had a lot of facilities changes as you've heard, had an opportunity to listen to earlier, which is great. I did have a quick question for you. So, one of the things that you mentioned that you guys do provide is the strategic planning and I was curious on that, what is, how do you define strategic planning? And I realize that that's not a service that we're currently seeking from you, but just so that I have an understanding as well, what do you view as strate, as strategic planning that you guys provide?
Strategic planning is a process that typically will look forward over the course of usually five years in our experience. And it's a process whereby the district analyzes what are the current strengths that the district has that they feel need to be preserved and also, the challenges that will be faced over the course of the next five years. And then, based on that, what we do with strategic planning is we organize focus groups so that the entire community gets an opportunity to have representation with, with presenting information about that. Some of strategic planning obviously is related to facilities. Okay? Some of it obviously is related to enrollments, but it also is related to instructional techniques, institution of technological developments and so on and so forth. And so, strategic planning is a, a, a system whereby the key elements or the most important factors are identified. And this is the, you know, usually it involves a very wide specter of the community. And then, the information is reduced so that the school department can develop maybe five or six major strategic planning goals. And then, underneath that is the action framework, which then says, okay, this is how we're going to get there. And we advise districts when they're going to do that to use what we call smart goals. And so, it not only says, what are we looking to do with this particular action item, it says, who's responsible? It says, what's the timeline? You know, it goes through the process, how do we know we've attained it? And therefore, it oftentimes relies on data analysis and it spells out the data that will be analyzed. And then, it mentions statutory procedures. So, certainly, what we're talking about here would be a piece of strategic planning, but it's a, it's a wider spectrum.
Any other questions from members?
Mr. Kennedy, thank you very much for the report.
You're welcome.
Just, just a question, on the people that work at New England School Development Council, all former educators?
That's a good question. Not every single one of them, all right, but most of them are.
Your background is former education?
My, my background is, actually, I was, yeah, my, my background is educational and most of the people I work with, however, we, you know, we have people who are specialists in, in other areas as well. We also have communication with and, and sometimes if there's a need, form partnerships with architects and so on. So, it depends really on the project and, and what we're looking for.
It's just obviously what, you know, watching you go through the presentation, that your background was, you truly understand the concerns of education and what we deal with.
I, I, I started as a teacher. I told the other group, I, I grew up in Medway, so I'm very familiar with Milford. And, and you'll, you'll probably find this hard to believe, but the, one of the biggest days as a kid for us was when the Johnson bus, which used to come to Milford, they had a bus line that came up here. We could take the bus to Milford because Milford had a movie theater and that was just one of the very best things. But I started, you know, I've been in education for a long time and moved up into administration and so on, but to be honest, I, I never had a day teaching that I didn't like. You know, it was, it was just a wonderful experience and, and we've come to, through this particular project and this job and others, you get a sense of what's happening in education and how to solve problems. And that's our primary function, we enjoy that. I do want to mention one other thing about Nezdec. Although there are many organizations that typically get involved with facility studies, Nezdec is one of the very few that is involved in demographic studies and enrollment projections. So, we are able to combine all of those factors in, in one project and I think that helps.
And, and John, so you mentioned the demographic and enrollment analysis and, and the best use study. A big component to this is looking at the condition of the buildings. So, is that included in the, in the best use study or is that a separate service?
No, that is included in the study in this sense. We will, we will get information from the building principals and also the maintenance folks with regard to system functions, plumbing, heating, roof, so on and so forth. And we will be able to identify any needs that have been addressed. And oftentimes, there are, you know, the facilities folks are able to give us not only the needs information, but also in many cases, estimates in terms of what the cost factors are. And so, we are very much involved in that. We are involved in getting a sense in terms of what is the capacity of the building with regard to, let's say, Wi-Fi X, access, things along those lines. So, it's, the template is a pretty extensive questionnaire which deals with that. It deals with site information, it deals with questions related to parking, pickup, drop-off, field space, condition of playgrounds, so on and so forth. So, the summary that the school committee would get would have notes, not only the capacity analysis, but notes that would include all of that information. Now, if it were in terms of, you know, getting it fixed or something along those lines, then, you know, if the district asked us to, we do have architects that we work with who, who could get involved in that piece.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the only thing I would just say is, as we think about, as, as we're looking at, you know, what are the services that we provide and everything else, you know, obviously for this presentation, it was really focused on the demographic and facilities use. I would like to at least explore what the option is for potentially this, including the strategic planning piece. I think it's something that may be viable, especially given all of the other things that we're looking to create with a longer-range education plan and everything else, I, I do think it's something that we should at least get some additional information, potentially look to explore that as a, as an additional service if we were to move forward with, with Nezdec.
Yep. Good. All right, any other questions for John? Thank you very much for coming in today.
Okay, thank you all very much. And I, I can tell you one other thing. We go out of our way because we take pride in what we do to make sure that we satisfy our clients. We, we want to help you with whatever issues come up and that's, to be honest, you know, that's what we like to feel when we're driving home after a day, that, that we've helped people, so.
Well, thank you very much.
So, next item on the agenda is the, the operating protocols and it was included in your packet, I have a copy here for all of us to sign, very similar to what we did last year, it's just a guide for how we, we conduct business as a committee, so we'll pass that around later on. Next item is a report of, it's Kathy, Report Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to jump in front of Kathy.
Oh, are you? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yes. Am I looking at the wrong one?
Yeah, we all have you on the agenda.
I've got the, all right, perfect. I respectfully, I respectfully rescind my, I'm looking at the, you can talk next Thursday. See, I was all excited, all geared up and nothing.
I'm a little let down.
It's like full of disappointments.
I'll listen to you.
I appreciate it though.
To start on approval of warrants, I have six warrants this evening. The first warrant is in the amount of three hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion, motion from Scott, seconded by John, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
Motion from Joe, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
Motion, motion from Mike, seconded by Jen, all in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of thirty-one thousand one hundred three dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion from John, seconded by Scott, all in favor?
The fifth warrant is in the amount of five thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion from Jen, seconded by Joey, all in favor?
The last warrant is in the amount of one hundred six thousand four eighty-two and three cents.
And motion from Mike, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
There is a, a budget update for the committee's review. I do have a few items relative to the current budget status. One is that we have signed the scope of work for the final E-rate projects, which are the high school in the Brookside buildings. That work will begin very soon. The scope of work is out and the funding has been approved and all is moving forward as expected. Hopefully with a finished date of June thirtieth for the high school and Brookside. Under the current local appropriation, we're coming to the end of the school year and principals are using their final finances to fund some important items. One at the high school is they were able to fund the enrollment need for the biology textbooks. Carrie funded seventy of the needed enrollment textbooks for biology. Brookside and Memorial have used their final financial figures for projectors, built-in projectors and updated some of the classroom setups. Rob Quinn is moving forward with his, now that the end of the school year has come, some of the end-of-year projects he'll be moving forward with, with purchase orders. The high school has had a few leaks and we need to work on some duct work and that has come in at approximately thirty thousand dollars. The Stacy phone system that he spoke about, he feels comfortable at this point, he'll be moving forward with purchase orders for that as well as Stacy HVAC control updates. We do have contract obligations that we have to consider from now until the end of the school year, which are not an encumbered expense such as SIC incentive under the unit A contract as well as if the unit A people meet the mean average contract language, we have to fund both of those contract obligations. And I'm expecting another thirty thousand for, for those obligations. We're in the process of evaluating our transportation budget as well as our out-of-district and we will in, be- we will begin the process of reconciling all of our purchase orders from now until the end of the school year. I expect no surprises. I believe we will move forward with a solvent budget at the end of the year to date. I also have one personnel update for your review, no vote is required. We do have an out-of-state travel request, and that will be moved over to Kevin. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, no, that's what I thought I was jumping into, I was looking at the previous agenda, though. So the out-of-district travel request is Dr. Joseph and I would like to request to attend the Model Schools Conference, which is in Nashville, Tennessee, from June 24th through the 28th. This is kind of one of the big national conferences, there's a number of national speakers, focus is technology, 21st century skills, social-emotional learning. The MASSS brought in Dr. Bill Daggett to speak earlier in the year, and a lot of districts across Massachusetts are working with Model Schools and his leadership group, and we feel like we can bring a lot back to the district based on what we've seen so far, and some of the work we've done with them. And then we'll take a vote.
Do I have a motion? Motion from Jim, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Great, thank you.
And there is a gift, Mr. Chair.
There is a gift. It's a gift of $925 from the Milford Family Network helpers. Very generous, so I have a motion to accept the gift. Motion from Mike, seconded by Jen, all in favor? Thank you. Any other, any questions for Kathy from the committee? All right, thanks, Kathy.
Yes.
All right, next item is subcommittee updates. The only subcommittee, I think, that's met since the last meeting is the Budget Subcommittee. All of you were in attendance at the last budget meeting with FinCom, so I'm sure you're all up to speed at this point. Our budget proposal is the 4.91 percent number. I believe there's a Finance Committee meeting that's happening on May 10th, that I'm sure we'll probably be invited to at some point, so.
Judges, real quickly, so two things. One, for that, I know we're, we are on the agenda for the 10th, for May 10th, for that meeting, so hopefully we'll be able to attend that. And then are there any other planned meetings, either with this budget, with our Budget Subcommittee, between now and, and town meeting?
There's one on the, on the calendar, calendar with FinCom on the 8th, I believe, but I'm not sure if that's been confirmed with Mark yet.
Okay. And then just, are we, and maybe this goes under future, future agenda items, will we be, will be there, as, as, after these meetings are concerned, will we then be doing a, as a future agenda item, will we see a, a final vote for what will be put forward to town meeting?
Well, I think we've done that.
We did not. That was a vote, that was, the motion and the second was actually a vote, and that was taken, was actually put forth to the Finance Committee, and was not put it forward to town hall, to town meeting. So it would have to, it would be a separate, it would be a separate, it would be a different vote, because it's two different things. You don't have to take a vote to do it, to finance. We did, that's what that motion and second was.
Yep.
We would have to, we would need to do one that's going to put it forward to town meeting.
Well, we don't present our budget to, excuse me, we don't present our town, our budget to town meeting. FinCom presents it as part of Article IV.
Right, we still have to come to agreement, and we still have to make a vote for what we want to bring forward, as a school committee, to, as a, as a proposal for whether, Finance Committee may get up and talk about it, and may do the presentation, but we have to, we have to make a commitment for what's going to go forward, not just as a presentation for them, but for town meeting. It's a separate, it's a separate item.
I think we need clarification on that, because that's not my understanding of how it works. The FinCom presents Article IV to town meeting.
Yeah. So my understanding is regardless of what we put forward, we could put forward a $46 million budget, but that's not what's going to end up on town meeting if that's not what FinCom wants to put forward.
No, that's absolutely not correct. We are, we are, we are an independent board, that we put forward our own budget. The Finance Committee is an advisory board, and they either recommend to support or not support. They can present, but it's up to us, and historically, that's what, historically, the Finance Committee, because we've been in a lot, because there's been improvements on it, but no, we're an independent board, they may introduce their article, but we would present our own, we would present our own budget, because it's our budget, we own it. Finance Committee would recommend or, or not recommend, but we, it's our own, it's our budget. And now, historically, in town meeting, our process has been Finance Committee gets up, they introduce some articles, Board of Selectmen members introduce some articles as well. It just depends on who's supporting and who's presenting their article, but our budget is not, we're not submitting an approval for a budget for the Finance Committee, they're an advisory board. Our approval and submission of budget is for town meeting. That's the difference, and we can certainly ask Jerry for some clarification on that, the town moderator. But what our, what we're trying to present, and what the approval that we are seeking as an, as our board, is not from the Finance Committee. They are not the ones who approve our budget. Our budget is solely approved by one group and one group only, and that's town meeting.
But the way I, the way I understand it is, it's Article IV at town meeting, the FinCom presents that to town meeting, and if that's not the budget that we want to move forward with, we would, we would make a motion on town meeting floor to amend it.
Hmm, I, I, yeah, let's clarify, yeah, let's clarify that, because that's, yeah, because we, it, they're, it's, you know, they're going to present the budget, so.
Don't we, do we typically have a budget hearing? Isn't that part of one of our meetings?
That's after.
That's after, after town meeting? Okay.
It's whatever they approve, then we come back and we have to, we have to vote on approving it afterwards. So we vote, what has historically been the case is, we vote on what we're going to submit to town meeting slash Finance Committee, it's usually been, it's usually been a vote to what's going to be submitted to town meeting. And then it's, after town meeting approves it, we have to vote to accept what they've approved. And we just have to, basically, it's just an acceptance, it's more of a formality, it's about a nine-second conversation, but it's, that's, that's historical within the process. But I agree, let's, let's confirm with Jerry and with the town moderator of who presents the budget, what we need to vote on, just so that we have the right process in place, because the vote that we have right now is the submission to Finance.
Right. So we'll clarify with Jerry, because if, so if, if that is, if the process is what John and I think it is, then we've already made the motion to submit the budget to FinCom, and we're all set, we have to vote. Jerry comes back and says, no, you actually need to vote on the number that goes to town meeting, then we'll have, we'll hold this, a vote at our next meeting on the 4th.
That's fine.
All right. Future agenda items, this could be one.
That's one.
Any other future agenda items? The only one I, I had, so obviously, we just heard from the representative from NESDEC, are there other vendors that you're looking at as well? Obviously, they're a reputable organization, they do this all the time, but I just wanted...
We, we're going to explore to see what some of the other, what some of the other options are out there.
Okay.
But I think the, the goal here tonight was to kind of get a sense of what the process would be like. NESDEC does a lot of these for districts across the state, they've had 250 in the last 10 years, but we are going to look at other options and kind of do some cost comparison and level of service comparison.
Yeah, okay, good.
Including that, can we get what the cost would be for that? Because this, I thought his presentation was good, but I have no idea what the cost is.
I think, I think what he said, when we talked to him earlier in our early meetings, depending on the scope in the district, it could range between, and we'll say our district, between 25 to 30,000 for all of it. And if we were to go to like a, like he said, like a Springfield, you're talking hundreds of thousands.
Yeah. And that's fair.
Okay.
We should probably add feedback for the superintendent, so we can tell you how your year's been.
Evaluation, yeah, yeah.
Or to talk with you, and that's one of the few things that we're actually supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I think that's going to be on one of the June meetings, but yeah, we'll, we'll have that. Better be ready.
Sharp for new knives, man.
Any other future agenda items? No? All right, any old business? No? All right, so we do have, actually, do we have an executive session tonight?
Yes, we do.
Jerry coming in? We do? Okay. Scott and Mike, I can defer you to this one. Do I motion to adjourn first, or do I do the roll call for executive session and then motion to adjourn?
You know, it's why we're going into...
Yep, and you go, you announced that we go in, that we're going into executive session, the purpose of which is collective bargaining agreement to do it in a public meeting would weaken our position. And then we do motion to adjourn, it will require a roll call, take roll call, motion to adjourn, and move on.
And then motion to adjourn after that, okay. All right, so we do have executive session tonight to discuss the AFSCME bargaining, will not be returning from regular session.
Correct.
It does require a roll call, so let's start on this end over here.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And now motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Motion from Joey, seconded by Jen, all in favor?
And good night.
Good night, everyone. I'll get the hang of this eventually.